It's Monday, April. This is the zoning board of appeals. Tonight we have members of Bob Wisnia, Chris Dickerson, myself, Hank Nussbaum, Shawn Flynn, and Cal Watzke. Chris is an alternate sitting in for...
Celia.
Celia, right. Okay, so we can begin the meeting. Let's hear the first appeal.
Dana Poundstone.
Yes. So if you would identify yourself, please.
Sure. I'm Derek Poundstone. Dana and I own residents of six, Knollwood Road, and here in Woodbridge.
Okay, and so if you would mind describing what the appeal is?
Yeah. So, well, thank you guys for your time. I appreciate the board being here and meeting to discuss these issues. So we purchased the house in 2018. It's over on Knollwood Road, about a half mile from here. So the residence is about 2,600 square feet, four bedroom. We purchased it. I'm, you know, there's three adults in the house now. My stepson now is 19. So what we found over the last year or so is we have to park one, and sometimes two cars in the, out in the driveway. Because, and if you look at, I went a little overboard on my descriptions here, but if you look at the appendix B, that's not to scale, but it's, we'll call it a close scale, the 18-foot wide section, and the measurements are to scale. There's a vehicle in the garage, and it makes this fairly large garage, I'll show you right here, this appendix here, so it's page two of appendix B. So this shows you basically what drawings we had for the garage. And we'll discuss that a little bit more in detail in a second. But you talk, I talked about this encroachment area. So when they built the house, there is this little area that pushes out into the garage. It basically makes it a one-car garage, which is, you know, at the time, it seemed like it was fine. But, you know, now as our family has grown, it facilitates us leaving two vehicles outside. I've been working law enforcement for 20 years, and usually the vehicle that we try to park inside has guns in it, so I don't like keeping the car parked outside. Not that that's, the hardship essentially is having a large, beautiful home, and then I can only park one car in the garage, and I've got, you know, motorcycle, my personal car, my work car, my wife's car, and now my stepson's car. I didn't realize, mistakenly thought the setback was 45 feet when I originally drew up the plans. So we were looking at, now if you look at page one of appendix B, you know, we hired an architect to try to make it look as visually appealing as possible. Because if you make a very large garage, it can kind of look like a fire station. So we had a roof stepped down, we had a door of equal size picked out, so it would be basically, it looked like the house was supposed to look. And that was our intention. Then I obviously learned that there had to be a 75-foot setback, which is my mistake. I thought we were zone B. And this was...
So where those cinder blocks are, that's where...
Yeah, so that's why we picked, I was a stonemason before I got into law enforcement. Those cinder blocks were for the backside wall. I wanted to make sure when I built the wall, I used cinder blocks for a new wall, so in case, you know, because cars sometimes go through walls. So that was the intention, was we picked those up off like Marketplace for nothing, 12-inch, if you saw their 12-inch wide cinder block. So the intended purpose of those was to be the back wall. And then COVID hit, and we've been in sort of a holding pattern. Now, this variance process was restarted because I had to recently redo my roof. We had a leak. That's why you see the container out there. Then we had some tile damage inside, some flooring we're redoing, some insulation. So now we're just going, and we bought the house as-is in 2018, and have spent, you know, considerable amount of time, you know, kind of redoing it. So now we just want to, you know, go and complete the process. So now, we considered moving, because the, my current garage sits exactly 75 feet back, it leaves us no room except to expand the garage, west or east, which makes it basically double-wide. If I, if you're facing the house, it would be east, then I'm building my garage towards my neighbor's house, which puts me in a tight spot. If, my other other option is to put the garage off of my master bedroom, which makes no logical sense. So the only way I can expand the garage is towards the road. You know, we already, we have an existing horseshoe driveway. So hopefully, the pictures kind of facilitate that. The best, you're facing south, looking south. So when I say east or west, obviously, west is going to be left or right, and then east is going to be left. So the property line is about 10 feet beyond that fence. So if I add on the garage, you know, facing it to the left, it leaves me very little room to manipulate the car, and my neighbors probably wouldn't like that. And I spoke to the neighbor who most impacted, Sam and Betsy, I think. And they couldn't care less. They're a great couple. So that's basically long and the short of it. If you go through, I kind of explain in detail.
Sorry I showed up late. We're talking about the Knollwood Road property?
Yes, ma'am.
And we're talking about proposing a garage addition?
Yes, ma'am.
And is this, I'm looking at the map here, is this your driveway in the front yard? That's a circular driveway?
Yes, ma'am.
So the 22 by 20 edge would kind of interfere with your driveway?
No, ma'am. It would, it stops about a foot from, if you look where the zoning map is that you guys are holding, it just touches the edge of the driveway. The driveway's in disrepair anyways. This is, we're in the part of the process here where we recently just replaced the roof. We bought the house as-it, needed a bunch of work, so we have to replace the driveway as well. We just redid a bunch of insulation work. We pulled permits for all the windows. We have all the windows replaced but one.
When did you buy the house?
We bought the house in 2018.
When was the house built?
1967. So the area of, if you look at appendix B, this is what facilitates most of this issue here. Page two of appendix B, it talks about, I highlighted encroachment. So appendix B is basically just the scaled drawing of the architecture. This is this one right here, ma'am. And you'll see this area I highlighted in red, with, it has a little Mercedes in the driveway. It's funny, in the garage. That gives you a point of perspective of what that encroachment area causes in the garage. So it makes the garage a one-car garage unless I squeeze in there, which doesn't work very well.
All right, so we're talking about a one-car garage here?
It currently is, so this is, currently it's a two-car garage, but it's a one-car garage because the house extends into the garage. So with three cars, we have, we only have space for one.
In reality, in reality, it's really a one-car. It can only, it can only fit one car.
Yeah, and we've gotten camera in the last two years, six times, people jiggling the handles of my cars, and one of my cars, as I explained earlier, has firearms, and I've been law enforcement for 20 years. So that's, leaves me very uncomfortable.
Yeah, unfortunately, my cars have been ravaged through, and my neighbor's car has been stolen, so I understand that.
So one of the areas of concern is obviously, I need to be able to keep, I would, it's a one-car garage essentially, so, but I also have my own personal car. It's in the garage. Now, I build cars, I do a little everything, so I also...
So you're extending the existing garage?
Yeah, so it's a separate, so if you, if you look at the first page of appendix B, what we did is we tried to draw it so it's, it looks as visually appealing as possible. So we're not, we're putting an addition on the current garage, but it's a separate, it's, it combines, it's a lower roof line, looks more like a cottage. So from the road, the house is a rather large house, but from the road, it has a very compact, you know, efficient look. I like that. I didn't want this, we bought the house, we didn't want this big sort of monstrosity.
So what is the hardship here?
The hardship is the fact that it's a one-car garage for a 2,600-square-foot house. I can't build the garage back because there's, I'd have to drive to the backyard. I can't build to the west or east because if I build it to the east, it's going to encroach on my neighbor's property. If I build to the west, it's going to be in front of my den, essentially my living room.
Right, but what is the current problem? I understand you building in these other areas is going to be a problem, but building where you're proposing, what's the problem?
So ma'am, currently, the problem is that we're parking in the frontage. So the, which is specifically, I'm not going to say it's outlawed, but, you know, the zoning regulations, Woodbridge, you know, highlights that parking in the frontage area should be avoided at all times, if possible. So right now, we currently have at least two vehicles that are at all times parked in the frontage area. And if I park in front of the garage, it basically turns my garage into a dead space. Because if I park one or two cars in front of the garage, it makes my garage useless. So I have the choice of parking three cars in front of the house, or one car in front of the garage, and then two in front of the house. So it's just not visually appealing. It looks, you know, it's an ISO and you have all these cars in the driveway.
And you've spoken to your neighbors?
I spoke to Sam and Betsy. They're the neighbors on the, if you're facing the house on the left, they're, they're the ones that would see the garage. They're fine.
And Chris, we have no letters?
We have no letters. There were several people that came in and reviewed, but we didn't receive anything.
So basically, currently, when this house was built, I know it's a small garage, but it's a two-car garage, a narrow two-car, and you want to have a four-car garage, basically. And with the zoning as it is, you really can't do it unless you get this exception. There's no other place to build it, basically.
There isn't, and the current...
You have, you know, reasonable, I mean, good reasons to want to do it. There's no question about that.
Yes, sir. Well, the big thing, the current garage is exactly 75, it's at the maximum, or the minimum distance right now, currently. So I can't, if I...
No, no, I realize. And you'd be driving out, which shows the side, not the circular drive, but the side driveway, is where you exit from the current garage, and where this one went from now.
Yes, that we use that one 90, the horseshoe is, driveway is currently in poor condition. The goal is to possibly get rid of that. There's no, there's no purpose of the tracks from the house.
So, just a couple of questions. There's no way to configure this garage to be east of the existing garage? That way you would be conforming with zoning regs? I'm looking at the map here, and it looks like there would be enough space where your existing driveway is to add a garage there. The challenge would be the doors of the existing garage would have to be reoriented to the front instead of the east side. They have to be reoriented to the north side. But if you're able to do that, a four-car garage with four doors facing north, then you wouldn't need a variance.
You face, yeah, so, yes, sir, so that would, it's possible, yeah, without a doubt. And I think the concern there is it's more of a, it does the opposite of what we're trying to do, is it creates a much larger footprint, the current footprint, visual footprint. So if you're looking at, you know, now the house is shaped like an L. Now it turns into almost a Z. So, and if I tried to face the garage the other way and make it double-deep, it's possible, but then I wouldn't have enough area to pull into the garage because of neighbors, neighbors' property.
Well, and then, and then also, the ridge line of the roof would change, and then also possibly adversely affect that side of the house where the existing chimney is, right, and could cause potential, like, basin water issues, depending upon how, what, I mean, like, with the potential.
So currently...
I think it'd be easier to carry that existing ridge line.
Currently, the ridge is moving, the ridge on the garage is moving north to south. So if we were to make it double-wide, we'd have two different ridges that are going two different directions, which would look like an addition. The goal is to put something on and, you know, make it very, you know, non-obtrusive. You know, I've lived in larger houses, you know, the goal is to make the house, it sits low. We like the neighborhood. You know, the houses are, all the neighbors' houses are, they're quaint, but they're large. But you don't drive down the road and think that these are all large, like little mini mansions. I used to live in Woolgate, and a, you know, 3,500-square-foot house, and it looked like a 3,500-square-foot house. That's the point with this house, is it's, it looks very compact. It's got an interesting floor plan. And when the original builder had built the house, what they did is they had made the entrance to the basement, is that little encroachment area, is the entrance to the basement. So to reorient that would be a significant challenge because there's a door that leads downstairs, and that whole section is insulated. The garage is not. You know, so it's, it's a, I spent the better part of five years trying to figure out how we could, you know, move this around the best way possible. And this was the solution that I came up with, and obviously paid an architect. And this is what they came up with, someone that's much smarter than I am.
You yourself is an architect?
No, no, I paid somebody, the architect.
I thought you said I am.
No, 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 no. So I paid someone much smarter than I am to figure out the best layout of the house to accommodate what we're looking at.
On this side of the garage, as Dickerson mentioned, putting it to the side there, but don't you have some windows and doors? Where you have this, the mansion, 7.95 feet, 7.32 feet, 6 feet. Is it, do you have some kind of windows in there?
On the existing garage or the new garage?
No, if you move the new garage, he thought you could put it facing the front, facing Knollwood Drive, put it side by side with that. But wouldn't you, you'd be obstructing a good part of the house?
If we made, if we moved it straight, facing the house, if I'm facing the garage, if we moved the garage so it extended towards my neighbors that are closest to Petkill Road, it's possible to have two large garage doors, but the problem is we'd have to reor, the proper way to do it would be to reorient, reorientate the roof. So now the ridge goes west to east instead of north to south. And now we have, we have one ridge going north to south, and we want to extend that ridge. And the idea is to not only extend the ridge, is we're dropping it down, we're moving, so one ridge is going to be a foot setback. So it's going to have like a common back wall, but the front wall, the wall you see from Petkill turning on and over, is going to be stepped back a foot. The idea is to give it this dimension and this depth that, so it doesn't look like just, you know, essentially a 50-foot-long wall. You know, that's the overall idea. That's the theme of it, is to make it as least obtrusive as possible.
Chris, I have a question about something completely different. Celia's here. Am I voting or not voting?
You shouldn't be. That's how we practiced in the past.
Yeah, there's, I'm not voting because there's, that's the court.
You can still participate.
Of course.
You can vote, but...
No, I don't vote. I can participate.
But you can also vote, but it doesn't really mean anything.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So do we want to, do we want to vote on it, or do we have a discussion?
Well, you should just double-check and make sure no one's here to speak regarding this.
Okay. I don't see anyone, but is anyone here, anyone here to discuss this particular appeal? Okay.
We have no letters, Chris, or...
No, as I say, two neighbors came in in response to the notice that gets...
Well, they did come in to speak to you?
Well, they came in to review the plans.
Oh, okay.
But they, you know, I told them again, I mean, it's in the notice when the hearing is.
Right.
And they also, you know, can send an email.
They clearly didn't care enough to show up, so...
They did not come.
I mean, it's worth noting, I have a really good relationship with my neighbors. I actually drafted a letter to all of them, and I meant to talk to them all, except I talked to Betsy and Sam first. I had hip surgery, it was last minute, and I'm trying to hobble around. I was like, but I do have a good relationship with both across the street, and then Nick and Mary to my, they're my other side.
But it doesn't affect their property?
Only person that would see it would be Sam and Betsy.
Right, and who you spoke to?
Yes, that's who I spoke to, yes. Thank you, my son.
So hearing no other things, we'll...
Motion to close the hearing.
Close this. So a motion to close? Okay, any second?
I'm sorry.
It was Celia, I think. And we'll have Cal as a second.
Sure.
Okay, vote on that?
Move to approve?
What, approve the appeal?
Yeah.
Well, is there any other discussion? I don't know what the board wants to do.
Did we vote on the closing the hearing?
Yeah, that was...
Yeah.
Okay. I was looking down writing and not looking...
Okay.
Okay. So who made the motion? Oh, Celia made the motion to approve?
Celia and Cal seconded.
Right, to close.
To close the hearing, right.
And that was unanimous?
Correct.
And now, Celia's made a motion to approve?
Yeah, but apparently we need to discuss.
Well, I just want to make sure there isn't any, that's all. Okay, any other discussion from the board? Okay.
And the only thing I need as part of that is what, why you're granting it.
Okay, Celia, it was your motion. What would you like to use as a reason?
What was the reason, what was your reason for hardship?
The main reason was the layout of the house is original as-built. Maybe so is that the garage is insufficient for the side of the house. So it's associated with parking in front of the frontage area.
Okay, so Chris, what would we call it? Variance to the front, would it be the front?
It's front, it's to keep, it's kind of to keep the visual aesthetics of the...
Yeah, but it's a setback to the front, right?
Right, this is a front yard setback.
Yeah.
And part of the reason that he gave before was that it would visually reduce the impact of the size of the house to the neighbors and to everything.
You can add, there's no other reasonable location for the addition.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we have the motion, we have a second. All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous.
All right, so congratulations. Good luck.
And thank you for the excellent format of the request. This is one of the best ones I've seen.
Good luck to all.
The other ones you can all, like, we're not going to come up with.
Do you need any of these drawings back? Okay. Okay. So we're ready for the next appeal.
Celia, one was here, huh?
Well, unless you're going to invite the guys in the back.
Good evening. Andrew Schoen will come here on behalf of Jonathan and Sarah Davis.
This looks familiar to me, so you're going to have to explain what the difference is.
The difference is, it is familiar to you because a variance was granted back in 2021. At the time, the Quinnipiac Valley Health Department had approved the location of the proposed new garage. They later reversed that decision because the location of the leaching fields were, was other than what was shown on the as-bills, and they required a re-excavation to identify the exact location of the leaching fields. And it was discovered that it was an unusual configuration that now made the location of the originally proposed new garage non-compliant in terms of the requirements of the Quinnipiac Valley.
So what do you mean by non-compliant? It's over the leaching, too close or over the leaching fields?
Too close to the leaching fields, yeah. And so that was the reason of the original hardship, was that this location, it couldn't be any closer to the house because the, both the septic tank and the leaching fields are in between this detached garage, both the original detached garage and the proposed new garage. So at that point, the perspective, the angle of the garage had to be shifted so that it was far enough away from the, from the leaching fields. The Quinnipiac Valley Health Department then approved the new location, the second location. Those plans were submitted, and permits were issued. Work was considerable worth, work was done in reliance upon those permits in terms of excavation and the pouring of a foundation and a slab. It was only recently noticed in, in March, I believe, Ms. Elvin, that there was a misunderstanding with regard to the measurements in the second proposed plan, and a...
I mean, they went through this already, wouldn't they have known they should have gone through this process again?
They, they went, and when the second set of plans was, were submitted, they were informed at that time that no additional variance was required. There was an apparent misunderstanding as to the new measurements. The permits were issued. Work was done in reliance upon the...
Permits by Woodbridge or permits by the...
Town of Woodbridge, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes. So upon being informed of that, that's when this new application was filed. What is required is an additional 14 feet of a variance. This is a very, it's, I don't know, very, but it's a unique piece of property. The setback that we're talking about is actually with respect to an abandoned highway, the old Route 63. That is the, what the boundary line borders. Even with this additional variance that's being requested, the frontage would still be 155 feet away from the existing road. And that's just the nature of the way this piece of property is situated.
And remind me, this is for a two-car garage?
This is for a, what's really a, is it two and a half or two and three quarters, would you say?
I guess technically you said three.
Three-car garage, two facing the west, and one entrance on the backside, which is going to be facing south, which is going to be used to store tractors and lawn equipment.
And remind me, when we first heard this, this was being built into almost like a hill?
No, it was being built in the, essentially in the footprint of the old two-car garage. The reason that it couldn't be built elsewhere, in addition to it being, in addition to the restrictions involving the leaching fields, was that the slope behind, at the rear of the property, is all ledge and steep. It's just impossible to build anything there.
Okay.
So I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
On the drawing that I have in my hand, it has a... On the drawing that I have in my hand, it has a drawing, which is, it says two-car garage FF196.3. Is that the garage that was approved by the previous variance? Is that the location of the garage that was approved by the previous variance? Or is that the original garage that was on site?
Yeah, that, that, this is what you can look at, right? Yeah, that was the original garage.
And where was the location of the garage going to be that was approved in the previous variance?
It was that location with an extension to add the third bed.
Okay.
And that was, that was originally approved by QBHD and...
They changed that.
COVID had, we needed to get a new contractor, the time expired, we had to reapply, but QBHD approved that and they then since denied it.
By the way...
What was the actual problem? You are, you, you got the second approval the second time, you're building it. What, what happened that all of a sudden the permits were in doubt?
What, what happened is Mr. Davis, who couldn't be here tonight because he's feeling unwell, um, he visited the building department with a question about adding a, a lean-to, so to speak, on the back of this garage. And it was at that point that Ms. Elvin recognized that, um, a mistake had been made. Am I misstating anything?
No, except I'm Mrs., that's all.
Yeah. I, well, I said Ms.
I know.
So that means you could be anything.
I know, but that's why I'm a Mrs., because I worked hard at it, 49 years now. So, in all honesty, this is absolutely correct. You know, they'd submitted an application for a zoning permit and a building permit, and I failed to look at the plans that they were submitting for the zoning permit because typically in the 24 years that I've been here, you don't see when a variance is granted and it changed. Shame on me, I should have looked at it closer and I would have caught it at that point. So, yes, they should have come back knowing that they'd gotten the variance for the other thing, fortuitously in this particular case, as was noted by attorney. This has that incredibly wide, old, um, road in front of it. And so while it is a variance from you, in all reality, it's actually quite far back from, from Amity Road, but that's your decision, not my decision.
I mean, do we even have some stopple issues here because we, we approved the permits?
They have a foundation that was in.
Yeah.
And I stopped because at that point when Mr. Davis came in, he was seeking to perhaps do a lean-to addition to it. And that's when I was looking at the numbers going, wait a minute, that, you know, we approved 55 feet originally and now we were sitting at 40 feet or whatever we got.
To answer your question, that, that would be my legal position.
Yeah, and you're the attorney for...
I, I am, I am actually both the attorney for them and I am also their next-door neighbor.
Oh, fantastic.
So what happens with the existing foundation? Can you use that or is there a problem with that?
If you grant the variance, they can use the foundation.
They can use it.
Did the state of Connecticut have anything to say about this?
No.
Well, the, the, Housatonic, what is it? The Septic System. Quinnipiac Valley has something to say about it and that's the state that regulates the Septic Systems.
But not DOT.
Not DOT.
It's not, it's not their purview.
No.
Well, they own the abiding property in front of it. But in all reality, were this to come before you as a fresh application with the explanation of where, um, QBHD has found the Septic System to be, there is indeed a hardship that's there for the relocation that has occurred. Unfortunately, it's occurred in the not proper form.
Any, any letters or any comments from any neighbors except for the... The attorney is here today.
I'm only here as a neighbor to say that I have absolutely, nor, nor does my...
So you have two, two positions tonight?
Yeah, I, I have no objection, nor does my wife.
There's the, one of the parcels that's adjacent to this is actually vacant and is considerably wetlands, which is directly to the south.
So non-sellable land.
None, basically non-sellable and, um, as is stated, the closest neighbor is the neighbor that you have before you. And this is situated to the front and away from the neighbors that are to the back. Although I have, I have to say that nobody gave him to look at this.
I just have a question. Trying to understand what is the issue that we're confronting around the Septic or around the setback from the highway? Because that I don't understand.
This, the, the highway is part of an abandoned highway, so the highway, Amity Road in actuality is 155 feet away.
Right.
But the state owns the right-of-way much closer. And so the variance that you're seeing is a variance from the highway setback line. And it's caused to be...
Do we see on the map where, where that would be?
The abandoned?
It's, it's right where the stone wall is. It's that dark line that you see going across?
Yes.
It was, it was the old Amity Road, which would wind around and they straightened it out and they...
But they retained it, right.
It was the old footprint of Amity Road, going, going back more than 75 years, I think.
Yeah, I mean, they, originally it probably went here because there's ledge on the other side, but then they eventually...
Yeah, that's the other thing I, I should mention, that it's, and I think it's, it's evident from the photographs that were submitted. In front of the Davis's property is, uh, uh, it's more than a ledge. It's a, a 30-foot-high, um, slate, um, uh, mountain. You can't see it from, from Amity Road as you drive by. It's, it's, it'll be completely, uh, invisible from anybody driving by on Amity Road.
And the, um, in the time that the Davis's have owned the property, they've planted extensive plantings in the front and also put up a privacy fence.
That is true.
Actually, the privacy fence was there. Oh, okay. It's been repaired, but... Yeah. So the, the building in a sense is also buffered visually by the fence and the extensive plantings. But it's your choice.
Any other questions from the board? Okay.
Move to approve.
We gotta close, we gotta close first.
Okay, let's move.
Move and close.
Okay.
My second.
Okay, all in favor? Good, that was unanimous. Now?
Yes, I'll move to approve.
My second.
There you go. All in favor? Okay, unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Oh, I forgot to ask if there are any neighbors.
We asked that.
None that have any friends in the neighborhood.
Good luck with getting it finished, man.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully this is some pro bono work for like a beer or a cookout or...
We may have a barter situation.
So I'm going to give you copies of what I've sent you and I don't know if you want to discuss that right now or not. This was in relationship to updating the sheet that's historically been given out to prospective applicants.
Oh, we had the email exchange around.
Right. If you want to think about it some more, it's basically what you would like to see submitted to make your lives easier to make a decision. Part of what was driving it was this old form has some old fee schedule on it and so that needs to get changed.
So who, who edited it, Chris? Who edited it?
I edited what I sent to you just to change the...
So you were the one to propose the changes?
The changes were driven by the fact that the sheet that we have has outdated fees on it.
Yeah, 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 I'm just asking like...
And I don't have the...
Because you're the one that knows what we need. So I'm asking, did you make those changes?
I made them, but I, I'm welcome to have whatever you want.
I'm fine if you made the changes.
Because I want you to be as complete when you're making a, a decision. You know, I encourage them to send the pictures. They always, you know, you ask for elevations and that gives you that visual aspect as you had with the first one that was here and whatnot.
Well, I mean, my take on it is, you know, I, I feel like the application serves its purpose and the folks actually take the time to provide substantive information is helpful and, but there's been appeals where it's kind of like, you know, not, not so great and they could have done a better job on that to help us. So I think just if like, if they take more care and effort and they're thorough in filling this out, that helped, that really, that's what helps, it's made anyway.
The, it looked like the only, this fee of $53 is now $60. And on the old one, under serving as, as B4 plans, I, I, it doesn't, it doesn't quite spell it out on, on the new ones. I mean, I think it's in there kind of, but it doesn't really mention four plans. I don't know if that's something you have to include in there or not.
That, I, I don't know if that helps you make a decision or not. Typically, it's been more of a decision on the exterior rather than...
No, I just know, I'm just looking at the differences and the new one doesn't mention four.
Right.
So I don't know if that's something we should have in there or not, I don't know.
Well, this particular case, the first case, we needed to know that there was that encroachment into the garage, so that was a sort of...
No, it was important to know that, yeah.
That wasn't floor plan, so that was exterior plans.
But it was sort of, I don't know, inside out.
It showed an interior, it showed a little interior cut there, but...
But the exterior plans would have shown the garage.
They showed, they didn't show that interior, that little interior cut, but it didn't show that. No, I agree with that. I don't know, I, I'm just saying if you think it should be included...
Would that have changed our decision?
Well, was part of his, was part of his explanation for why.
A hardship, a hardship, yeah, a hardship, but that's not really a hardship. The hardship is the closeness to the street, right?
Oh, sure. No, I mean, I'm just saying it was a piece of information.
Yeah, 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 I know. Like, we can, we can, we can take that into consideration, but that's not really part of it.
I just know, Chris, if you wanted to add that, I'm just saying if you felt that, that we should have a floor plan on the new...
It's just text and if that's helpful, we leave it in.
No, no, it's just that it's not on the new one. I, I just wondered if it should be. I'm not being critical or anything, I'm just looking for differences.
Not taking it as criticism, I'm just...
Looking for differences between the two and that's...
If we want to be equitable, I think it should be included, so include it.
Yeah, I think it should because it can help sometimes.
Yeah.
Even here, I just, I think, no, it made that real job.
Well, it's an equitable consideration.
It made you feel more, a lot of proof there.
Right, I could understand his argument that much better.
Yeah, right.
I think it, I think it helped.
Okay.
Questions? Who votes and determines the chairman of this board?
You guys.
When can we vote again for that?
I will double check on that. Typically, it's like every two...
Do I have to move for a vote?
Well, it's every two years typically. And it's typically done, well, now you've got a different, um, election cycle. So it used to be done in July because your new...
I've been two election cycles and we haven't voted for a new chairman.
Yeah.
So I think it's time.
So if you want me to double check or you just want to do that, you can do that.
All right, yeah. I came here six minutes late and our chairman shows up 20 minutes late and, and we wait for him and it's, it's very upsetting that I show up five, six minutes late. And it's very upsetting how the chairman has spoken to me in the past. I take this job very seriously and I think we need to consider our options here.
See, I, I don't think, honestly, we had five people here and it was after seven o'clock and the people, we just, we didn't know.
Yes, but do you know how many times Hank has shown up after seven o'clock?
We didn't realize...
Do you know how many times?
But at those times, I think we didn't have enough people. I, I'm just like, I don't think, I don't think anything was a slight...
Robert, I said I was coming. I said I was coming. Do you know how many times?
Well, we didn't know that.
I emailed everyone and said I was coming several times. This is the second time I've showed up five minutes late and you've started the proceeding without me. Do you, how many times, Hank, have we, we waited for you? Many times, you've even forgotten about the meetings.
I don't know what you're so upset about, really.
I'm upset because you started the proceeding without me five minutes.
We did it in a...
Five minutes.
I hear you. We did it in, in an effort for the people who were here.
And I come here, I ask the most questions, I put in my time, I dedicate my life to this.
There was dispute about...
You don't understand half the stuff we get from our council explaining things to the people that come here. I'm the one that asks the questions, that explains things to people. Can you say you've done that?
I, I'm not really sure where you're going with this.
I'm asking you, can you say you've done that?
That's not my job.
You are the chairman.
That's correct. I'm not a lawyer and we are, we are citizen members of this board.
Okay, time to elect a new chairman, that's all I have to say.
Well, I don't think that we...
Move to close the meeting? Aye.
Point of order, do you have minutes to vote on?
Yeah, we have minutes. They're, they run the pack and I think we should go over them.
I have no issues with the minutes, I, wherever you go. I approve the minutes.
Yeah, I, I move to second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, that's passed.
I move to close the meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Done.
Thank you.